President, so it's a quorum.
All right, next we'll rise for the political leaders. I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I have not had any suggestions for moving anything in the agenda, so if you have any comments on it, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And that brings us to item number three then, the recognitions and awards. And Todd, I'm just gonna turn that over to you.
Yeah, I see two folks here. I don't see Jason's not here yet, so he might show up later, so maybe.
Start with the other two, if we want to. We can come back to that.
Great, thanks.
I think we should mention it now, though, just in case he doesn't, they won't come back to him.
Okay, sounds good. So, first one is Jason Boggs. Jason Boggs is a chemistry teacher at our high school. You've probably heard his name many times. A lot of students write down his name for things to recommend them for schools, and they talk about his science teaching techniques and how he has really done a great job in the classroom. I might put Hannah on the spot. Have you had Mr. Boggs? Hannah, what have you heard about Mr. Boggs?
Oh, great things. Whenever somebody's struggling, they always go to Boggs, even if it's not chemistry, or even like help kids go to Boggs all the time and ask for help. He's more than willing to help you, and he's a great guy.
And as a result, he has been nominated for the University of Minnesota's Outstanding Science Teacher Award, and so his nomination is in there, and we wish him the best of luck, and hopefully he gets that. The second thing is, you may have heard of our Healthy High School Challenge, and we do have Mr. Cockrum here today to talk about that, if you have questions about that. But I just want to congratulate Tim and his group with everything that they've done through our food service. We have some exciting new programs in our schools, and as a result of getting good food that's healthy and a combination of other points, maybe you can talk about the criteria, Tim, we have now been ranked in the top ten in the nation of all Sodexo schools.
Correct. So Healthy High School Challenge is a, it's pretty much a way to increase participation with healthy items. So the scores are derived through, you know, sales, if you would, of either combo meals, which is a reimbursable meal, and also through snacks and beverages. So juices within a certain size, snacks that meet certain calorie requirements, things like that. So just as of last week, we were moved to, we were ranked sixth for combos, which is the reimbursable meals, and then we were ranked seventeenth overall in the country out of 100 different high schools. So this is our first year participating, but we've done a good job, and every week we just kind of fill out a little calculator, which kind of makes sure we're on the same playing field, just divides up by population and things like that. So it's an equivalent score for all high schools across the country. So we've been pretty successful with that.
And the other recognition is with Kevin Hildebrand. He was, he's been a past president of MASUM, which is the Minnesota Educational Facilities Management Professionals Association. So he was awarded his past president's award from that organization, and we congratulate Kevin. And I do see that Mr. Boggs is in the room. We said all kinds of good things about you, Jason, too. So if you're okay, I'd like to take a picture with Mr. Boggs and shake his hand, and Richard has cameras.
Do you have something to give him, or not?
We don't have a certificate here, we didn't get it made out, but we can shake his hand. He does have it, I just want to have a witness.
Go to Mr. Boggs, and he'll get it done.
Yep, so. Now you guys know who Mr. Boggs is, so he's hot. Ready? Congratulations. Jason, do you have any comments or words of wisdom for us?
I don't know. Do you have any questions?
Maybe, what do you teach at the high school?
I teach chemistry, regular chemistry, honors chemistry, and advanced chemistry.
Good. We were just saying, Hannah brought up to the kids how much they enjoy your teaching and all the help that you give them.
Yeah, I got to have Hannah as a student. But no, I mean, I was shocked, I was very pleased. Emily was one of, she was a very hardcore student and loved chemistry, so getting that letter was very exciting. And so, yeah, I got to try some new stuff with a group of kids. I went to Belize and got to see science and the ocean and the rainforest, so that was really fun. And we're gonna try it again a couple of years in Ecuador, see how that goes. So, the Galapagos Islands, so we'll see how that goes.
Okay, cool.
But, yeah.
That's awesome, Jason. Just to be nominated is such an honor, and we're so lucky to have you in the Federal Public Schools, and so we just thank you for all you do for all of our kids, and congratulations again.
Thank you. That's it? We'll try to get something in the paper for you, Jason, too.
Right. That brings us next to our community comment time. So this is time for any members of the community, if you come and address the board with any comments or concerns that they have. There's a three-minute limit per speaker and a 15-minute limit per topic. The board doesn't respond at this time to comments that are brought to the board, but we are certainly happy to get back to you at a later time. We're just not prepared at board meetings to answer any questions, so we want to make sure we get back to you with the best information. So with that, if there's any comments, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Mark Blackstead. It's kind of funny I came tonight when the food guy was here. I think it's great that our schools are looking at healthier food and all that stuff for our kids. It's the lunchtime that our kids are eating at. I mean, I guess, I didn't know what this was all gonna be about, like, was it gonna be on the agenda or stuff, or he couldn't say anything, but we have 100 less students there now than we did when I was there. We had four lunches, starting around quarter to 11:00. And I think the kids are coming home hungry, and I don't know how they're learning when they've not eaten since 10:30. Well, my child eats at 10:00, and so that's an issue. And last year, it was the same time as a sixth grader, but she was allowed a snack. And then this year, when I called, they're not allowed snacks, which I know, I think that they've changed their mind and their policy on to that. I told the principal, Megan will be bringing a snack anyway, whether she gets in trouble or not. I'd like the school board to look into that, because if breakfast is such an important meal of the day and healthy food is such an important thing, them being hungry seems important at the end of the day. So I guess that's kind of all I had to say, and I just think it's weird that with less students, earlier lunch, that just doesn't make sense. So, shh, don't respond.
No.
Just don't like it over and see if that's something we can do for our kids.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Just, I mean, we would like, love to follow up with you, so just make sure we have your information, or give us an email, and we'll make sure that we get back to you.
Your name? Yeah. You need, you need.
We absolutely want to do that. So thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other comments at this time?
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments, we'll move along with the agenda. And that brings us next then to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are approved by one motion. They are not subject to debate, but any item can be removed from the consent agenda by the actions of any board member. Are there any items that board members would like to remove this evening? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Click, would you please do a roll call?
Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes seven zero.
All right, thank you very much. And that brings us then to the curriculum item on the agenda. We have a curriculum committee update.
Good evening. Our curriculum committee met on Monday, October 19th. We started off with the great news within the district that we, from Avid, have received a Bush grant. We don't have all the details as of yet, but we know that we will be receiving a grant that will help with professional development and help us to continue to incorporate Avid throughout our district. The other good news that we had is from the middle school, the Washington DC trip, the one that you approved last year. We were expecting about 21 students approximately, and currently we have 61 students that are attempting to go to Washington DC in June. So we're very excited about that. And then we moved into the conversation with, partnership with South Central, with their high school manufacturing partnership, starting to have discussions about how we can partner, how we can do some courses that will connect with South Central, and so we were excited to have that discussion. We then moved into the World's Best Workforce, that is by MDE, a law that we need to discuss and at our next curriculum meeting and our next board work session, we're going to have to have discussions about SMART goals and some of the things that need to be in place for that report. We currently do have that report online from last year, but there are updates, mandated updates from the state that we need to add. And then, of course, we had a technology update from Maria, but I will let Maria talk about technology. Are there any questions about the curriculum meeting?
Colleen, would you say a little bit, my, from the committee meeting, my impression was that the Bush grant was extremely competitive.
It is extremely.
Lots of applications. Could you say just a bit about how many people applied, and I think how many awards were given out?
You know, at the, I know that at one, yeah, I don't know exactly how many people applied. I know that it was a large group, and, you know, Heidi said, oh, we ended up down to 12, and then we ended up down to four, but it is a very competitive grant, and so I would not have my best guess as to how many did apply, but I do know that getting one is very, very difficult. And so the fact that we, with the consortium of the surrounding districts, receiving one is quite the honor.
Thank you.
Is that an annual or a two-year grant?
It's going to extend till, I think it was 2020, that we will be continuously receiving the grant. I'm gonna have Heidi update us, because at that, all she knew that evening was that she received the grant, but she didn't have the details to go with it. But she's very excited to hear that they did receive it, and so she is going to do an update for us at the next curriculum meeting, and so I'll bring all that information. Like I said, it's just, it's very exciting to get that.
Any other questions for Colleen?
Thank you.
Seeing any, that brings us then to the technology update. Maria?
Good evening, I have a few updates. First, we had our first tech committee meeting this month on October 6th, and we have eight new members, and we'll continue to meet the first Tuesday of every month for that. During conferences recently, we implemented the second phase of our Schoology plan. We provided information for parents to sign up for Schoology, and so now parents can go online and view their students' information, view assignments, and view updates. That went very well. And the last update I have is on our E-Rate update. We applied for category one and category two funding, and category one funding was our telecommunications, that would be our internet, our fiber, and our voice services. And we were approved for those services. We were approved 80% reimbursement for our fiber and internet, and 60% reimbursement for our voice services. In our category two funding, those were the access points and the infrastructure. Those are currently under initial review right now, so hopefully we'll hear from them soon on the category two funding.
Maria, do you have a dollar total of what that 80 and 60% reimbursement comes out to be?
Um, a little over, about $100,000, I'd say, in reimbursement. We get about $76,000 back for our fiber and about $25,000 back for our voice services. It's the highest I've ever seen. Usually it's been about 76, 77%, this year it was 80%.
Questions?
I have one more question, but I don't want to interrupt your update if you have more to go on.
No, that's fine.
So I received an email this afternoon. I am not sure if all school board members got that, or if I received that as a parent of a middle schooler, in terms of games, apps, everything non-学习 on an iPad. You know what email I'm talking about with regards to high school, middle school?
There was an information posted in Schoology this afternoon for students at the middle school.
Yeah, so I commend whoever came up with that, and I would encourage them to even be more strict than what they're doing. Can you relay, did the whole board get it, or just us parents?
Well, I didn't look at, if it came through Schoology, I wouldn't have checked.
No, but it just came through an email saying there was an update through, in Schoology. Can you?
It came through a Schoology message, and I think a letter will be sent home either today or tomorrow, or tomorrow, a letter will be sent home. What they're doing at the middle school is, they're gonna restrict games and social media apps for students that have three failing grades. So if a student has three failing grades, the App Store will be disabled, and any inappropriate, or any games that are not educational will be deleted from their iPad. And I believe at the end of the quarter, or the end of the semester, they'll, if their grades come back up, they'll be able to get the App Store re-enabled.
So that's what it was. I would personally be in preference of one failing grade, and you don't get all the fun that goes with it, but that's just me personally. But anyway, I commend you for moving in that direction.
Have you received any feedback from parents at all that are upset that they can download games? Because I've gotten a couple emails and have suggested that they contact the district office first. So I'm not sure if they're following up with you guys or not, but I think it's a valid concern, and it has, I didn't really think about it as a board member to induct me, because my own kids don't have them yet, but if it is meant for school, why don't we just block it, games and social media apps from it altogether, and then not have that issue out there?
Right now, the current limitation is our mobile device management system. It's the software that we use to control the iPads. We can't limit games, or we can't limit a specific app. We can take the App Store completely away, but then that takes away from teachers being able to request their apps that they do use. One of the things, we did receive some calls from parents, and what we suggested to them is that they enable these restrictions that we're doing at the middle school. Every parent can do that themselves at home, and they can take the App Store away, they can remove any games, and they can set those restrictions codes themselves. So we do give that flexibility to parents to set those settings. We're trying to get that information out more to parents, too.
Well, and of course, it's a work in progress. It's our first year.
Yeah.
I mean, we're gonna have these things come up.
Yeah, every school district has gone through this.
Great.
Other questions for Maria? All right, thank you very much, Maria. And this brings me to item seven, policy, beginning with a policy committee report. Is there anything the policy committee would like to address before we go into items? Hearing no volunteers, we'll just launch right into the items. So we have, we have five policies in front of us this evening. Let me unseat my computer. They are Policy 536, Special Education Records and Records Retention Policy, Policy 406, Public and Private Personnel Data, Policy 410, Family and Medical Leave, Policy 413, Harassment and Violence, Policy 419, Tobacco-Free Environment. All of these policies are in front of us this evening for our first reading, which means we won't take action on them, but they will come back to us next month with, as long as the board has, feels comfortable with that, for a second reading at which time we can take action and adopt these policies.
That's a wild game.
While we turn to this retirement letter, and I tell you.
We were just talking about video games, weren't we?
Wow.
So, I lost track. So, we're looking at these policies. I think we can, these policies are for us, are this, tonight are just for discussion, so we can treat them as a group, unless there's an objection, and just see if there's any questions on any of these policies that are in front of us this evening.
What's on the Capital Projects 908? It's not on this list, you know, what's...
Oh, yeah, that was, we had no changes on it. I think it was a general consensus the last time, so we didn't change anything on it. Yeah, it was just the same policy that we had.
I commend you for adding e-cigarettes to the tobacco-free environment.
Yeah, that's nice to see. I remember that question actually a few years ago when they first came out, and the director of the ELC was asking what our thoughts were gonna be on that. Any other questions on these five policies? Okay, hearing none, these policies will come back to us next month. If you do find yourself with any questions, please alert the policy committee and Todd as soon as possible, so that the policy committee can have a chance to address this before our next meeting. That brings us then to item eight, finance, beginning with a finance committee report. Madam Chair, Madam Treasurer, would you like to say anything about that?
Well, I think we're gonna go over most of the contracts. We had discussion regarding the building projects and approval of the digital controls funding, and I think we'll probably discuss that more at length when we come to it in the agenda regarding going forward with our budget for the building projects. But otherwise, the other contracts were approved by the finance committee members.
All right, all right. Any questions before we move into the items? All right, so we'll take these one by one, starting with the Sten Nursing Services contract. Todd, you want to say anything about that?
Most things are pretty self-explanatory, just briefly. It's just, we like, Stens would like to purchase one hour a week of our nursing services that we have currently.
Actually, a decrease in a contract that we had approved previously. I'm getting that right, Rob.
All right. Are there any questions on this item? I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Brings us next to our Dr. Stephen Kahn, Phoenix School Counselor contract.
Each year we have our title funding that we have to appropriate certain dollar amounts to the private schools in town, and they are choosing to use their money for this particular resource. We don't have really much of a choice. They get to choose how they want to use those resources, and, but the money has to flow through us, so we need to approve the expenditure.
Any questions on this item? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, which brings us to the Tri Valley Opportunity Council Memorandum of Understanding.
Feel free to jump in anytime, you guys. This is just NMO, yeah. We've done this since I've been here. It's a memorandum of understanding with the school over in Lesion and their Head Start program that we have. It's just a co-op, isn't it, basically, Rob?
It's just an agreement to do the things that we normally, that we have done or required to do by law, but they'd like us to reaffirm that with Head Start.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, any questions on this item? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, which brings us to the Middle School recommissioning.
We have the two bids you see in here. These are part of our health and safety budget, and you can see that we have Hallberg there, and we have IEAs, another bid we're suggesting we go with, IEA.
Could you tell me about, what is the middle school recommissioning? I don't know what that means. What are these companies doing?
Normally, I'll try the first time, right, Kevin? So if I don't get it, yeah, it's where you balance the airflow within the classroom, so you make sure that there's appropriate airflow. There's a certain standard that you go by in order to make sure that you always have fresh air flowing in there. And you also want to make sure that you make the heat or the coolness regulated throughout the building, so it's not really hot in one area and really cold in the other area. Is that pretty close?
It can result in a savings as well, I think.
Yeah, and there's a savings. Well, yeah, when you balance it out, it's supposed to be a savings benefit, so.
Isn't there a refund, too, with this?
Is there a rebate on this one? Yeah, there's a rebate that Excel usually gives us on these, and I'm not sure what that dollar amount is.
55% roughly.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And that brings us to Jill A. Watson, Consulting Services Agreement.
This is a, comes from Sam Oak, our Yale coordinator, and this is a consultant that's very well-respected in the EL realm of staff, and she's helping us with some staff development pieces. It's all covered under Title III funding, but we would recommend that we purchase her services.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Discussion, questions?
I'll just say the finance committee was very supportive of this program, and the Yale program was rough.
Hearing no further questions, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And that brings us to the Sodexo Concessions and Special Functions Contract.
I might need a little help with this one. I kind of understand it, but I want to make sure you get the right message.
All right, in the past, the services that Sodexo provides in the areas of concession stands and special function food sales, if, you know, a department has a meeting and they're ordering food for that meeting, or whatever special function they're doing, that's outside of the meal service that we provide to kids. Those charges needed to run through our meal equivalent factor, in other words, the cost of that had to be converted to a meal, so that the meal then was billed or paid for at the meal rate. And what that caused is for Sodexo to be losing money on this, and they've done this for many years. I know Lori Deal and I talked about it at length, and it's something that when Tim and I visited last summer, he said it's going to be difficult for them to continue to provide that service if they continue to lose money. So we visited with Ken and tried to come up with some other options for concessions, but really, the best thing is to have Sodexo running those concession stands and providing that special function. So the state does allow us to have a separate contract for this. It does not have to run through that meal equivalent factor, and so that's what we're proposing, is that they be able to recoup their costs. They're not trying to make any money on this, they're just trying to recoup their cost.
Any questions? Do we have a sense of what the size of funds running through concessions are over the course of the year?
Hmm, do you, Tim?
I'd say on average, you know, it's very dependent on the events as well. I mean, they can range anywhere from $250 of sales at night, up to, you know, $700, $800 at the max. But, and all of a sudden, the agreement, 10% of that goes to the district, so, you know, 10% of sales go back to the district to cover the house.
And you provide the concessions for all events other than football and hockey?
Because that's out of the hockey arena?
Right. Is that accurate or not?
Mostly, except for tournaments.
Tim, I'm sorry, would you mind coming up to the mic, just because this is broadcasting?
Yeah. So, kind of tricky, but there are some events, like, you know, there's tournaments and things like that that happen, when there's, you know, groups, volleyball, you know, groups like that, that would cover concessions throughout that day. We cover anything that happens in the kitchen place, you know, so, yes, most of the swimming, the volleyball, basketball, and wrestling are the four major ones that we cover, so.
So you, so you're not involved in football and hockey? I think that's what you're referring to, that concession stand is separate?
Yeah.
Excellent. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you both. That brings us to the MSAD Sign Language Interpreter Services Contract.
And this is mainly to help us if we do have, we have two interpreters on staff, and if we happen to need a sub, we're able to access this contract with MSAD to help fill some of those vacancies that occur. That's all that is. contract with MSAD to help fill some of those vacancies that occur. That's all that is.
Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This brings us to item eight B eight, the HVAC digital controls for District Office slash Conference Center.
And I know that there was gonna be some questions about the financial pieces of it, but we do have, if you're okay with that, if we can wait for those questions and when Colleen is up here to talk about the financial piece of the construction part of it, that's under the financial reports, under letter C. I would suggest we approve the contracts, because we need to have our, we need to have the digital controls for both those different areas. But I'd like Colleen to talk a little bit about the budget for the construction piece, and if we could, instead of talking in two different spots, we can do it all in one under the finance piece, that would be great.
So we'd be going forward with a vote. Members would be aware that we are over the contingency budget and that, but you'd rather wait to discuss that whole piece until we get to the financial.
Yeah, kinda ties in there a little bit better. It's up to you.
I guess that's up to the will of the board, right, my bureau, with that. Is everybody aware, I mean, I know the finance department is, is everybody aware that where we're at sitting contingency-wise and all that stuff? I can only speak for myself being on the finance committee. I don't know.
I don't think that's been brought to the general board's attention.
Did you receive an email from Colleen? I thought that was to all board members.
Yeah, I've talked to each of the board members.
Okay, so I guess I've talked to them, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think I've got.
It was discussed with the facilities committees.
Yeah.
Can I, Mr. Chair, ask a question? If we're gonna have a discussion about finances of the construction projects, why don't we move these two items till after that discussion? Rather than acting on them and then have a discussion about the financing? They have some significant ramifications on the budget of the facility construction, so I would, and I apologize, Mr. Chair, that it's out of protocol to move something off the budget or the agenda's.
This is a point where I turn to me, sir, and ask, what's the vote call? Move things in the agenda.
Sure, why not?
That's what it says in Robert's Rules of War. It's sure, why not?
Sure, why?
Direct quote. I guess at the very least, I wanna just have a sense, as I look around the board, that we're okay with that, is remove things around the budgets. I personally feel like that's fine. I just wanna, if I'm seeing none, maybe we won't go through formal motions to do that as we're not taking it off the agenda item. Actually, I think, I take that back. I do know the formal way to do this, so let's not screw it up. We don't wanna do that. So that means to, that is actually what formally tabling items is for. You table them and bring them up later in the meeting, and when you table them, you have to say when they're gonna come back up. So I think we can handle it through that, that action. Normally, we talk about tabling being to another meeting, which is actually not what tabling is technically for. So I think that's how we would handle that, so.
Mr. Chair, I would entertain a motion to table the items on the HVAC for the district office and the FEC till after discussion at this board meeting of the funding of the two construction projects.
All right, thank you very much. And that'll be during the financial report is when you're suggesting that you wanna do that, right, Todd?
Yep.
So the motion is to move items eight B, eight and nine, to take place immediately after items eight C two. That is the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Tabling, I don't think is a debatable motion, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all for helping me get through.
Mr. Chair, yes, it's in the book officially.
Yes, sure.
Yashir.
Yes, sure.
Your bet, chair, is in there. Okay, so, yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Robichaud. My computer went to sleep again, so give me two seconds. This then brings us to item eight B nine, the Rice County Family Service Funding Agreement.
Number ten, yep.
I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. Eight B ten.
This is a grant that we apply for through Rice County that helps us with our truancy. We have, our social workers work specifically on truancy items, and so in turn, the Rice County Family Services Collaborative gives us $25,000 through that grant process. We write that every year, and then they vote on it, and then they approve it, so. And we need to vote on it and approve it as well.
I will entertain a motion to approve.
Oh, so I'm sorry. It's just a report. Oh, we don't have to have an action. All right, I'm sorry.
Got it?
Sorry about that. Thanks, Gavin.
Never mind, I will entertain no motions. Any questions for Todd? All right, that sounds like a great program. We thank Rice County for their collaboration on that. That brings us then to item eight, B eleven, technology clerical staff.
Fellas, you can all imagine with the demands of our iPad implementation, we have, the work has grown for clerical staff, and they really feel the need to add staff. This was a position, as I understand it, was a seven-tenths or wasn't a full position in the past. It was cut when we made budget cuts, so they'd be adding that full position back to the staff of the district office. They assist with when teachers are trying to get new programs, new software, develop curriculum plans. They assist with that. What assists with that?
This is adding three tenths to a...
Previous cut.
No, is there an existing position that we're making?
No.
And this is restoring to a full-time position that currently is not in place.
Great. For those who were at the finance committee, could you give me a sense of what the finance committee discussion was on this item?
No, minimal. I don't remember any discussion, all in favor in support of it.
Well, Maria said that she needed help.
Yes, yeah, Maria presented.
She was overworked, basically. Can't do two jobs, right? Basically.
Maria can do three jobs. She can do four.
Basically, with all the recent technology initiatives, we do need the additional support in our department to handle the data activities of our department. And the reason this is also a full-time position is our busiest time is during the summer, and so that's when we need to help the most, is during the summer. So I've taken on a lot of those duties. I know the business office is taking on a lot of duties, and it just becomes overwhelming to meet the needs in the appropriate timeline, so.
Questions from Maria, I'm sorry?
It's not a question for Maria, but for Colleen, it seems that part of this request is also to relieve some of the pressure on the business office that is currently doing a lot of...
That's correct, yes. Yeah, we noticed a huge impact in the last six months with this, and especially with the addition of the iPads. And those unfortunately took priority, and a lot of our, the work that that person does over the summer had to take a backseat.
So it's compromising the work that the business office has.
Absolutely, yep. And we don't see it in changing.
Well, I have to say, my only hesitation is, I'm always reluctant about adding things in the middle of the year. I like to do it when we can do it as a, as part of a comprehensive process at the end of the year. So I think, this is just for me personally, I guess, I wanna hear some sense of the emergent need at this moment, that it couldn't wait till the regular budget process. And I don't know if others share that concern or not. But that would be my only hesitation. I don't, I'm sure that it absolutely has created more work and more staff is, would be extremely helpful. But my concern is the timing, and whether or not we wanna do it now or wait until the, to we're doing the comprehensive process.
So Jason, that would be next, going into effect next July type thing? Is that, is that?
I think that's, right, yeah.
Okay.
You're right, we normally do the annual budget processes. We did last year in that impromptu main timeline. So that delay, I mean, that leaves you without a staff member for many months, so, and I understand that implication too, which is why I wanna talk about that and hear about what does it mean to wait on that for a number of months. In the past, at times, we have done something like this where we have added it temporarily for the year and then reviewed it again at the, in the full budget process too, so that we can see it as part of that. So it's not an automatic forever staff, and I don't know if that has implications for this particular position or not as well, so. So those are just my personal concerns, and I'm curious what other the board members think about those.
One of the things we need to start preparing for before July first is a collection of all the iPads, as well as getting them ready for the new incoming sixth graders and then inventorying all this, the ones that come from the seniors. And we're already behind a little bit in our inventory with some of the projects we did this summer. So this person would be kind of training. It'll take them a little while to get on board with all our new services that we implemented, but also to provide that training piece, that training time, and then be ready for when summer comes, when it's our busiest time.
Mr. Chair, I certainly, in principle, agree with your issue of adding something in the middle of the year. I think that's not what we wanna do. It causes Colleen to go back and rethink the budget and add this and subtract that. However, I do have a concern that if we are putting undue burden on our business office, which is a critical component, not that technology is not critical, but if Colleen is trying to, if I can say makeshift staff to get some of the reports done that need to be done, I have real concern about that. It's really taking from another program to address this, and I think we're putting some responsibilities on that, so. I totally agree with the issue of adding something in the middle of the year, but I think this is an issue that certainly needs to be addressed if the business office is experiencing some undue pressures.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaud. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I am concerned, as you indicated, about the precedent of adding a position in the middle of the year. Having looked at the budget process during the last five years, it's, there have been any number of groups that perhaps could make a real benefit, beneficial use of an additional staff, other departments. It doesn't seem, you know, we went through the process to, and have approved additional staff in a variety of areas, including technology since the previous year. And I'm just wondering if it's competitive or fair to take an argument at this point without other areas also, you know, whether they're, they have the need or choose to express the need now. I guess it seems to be outside the process. I do, you know, hear what Mr. Robichaud is saying, and I certainly have no desire to burden the business department, but we have added staff in a variety of areas and that was done as part of a comprehensive process. And I thought that was probably, I think that's probably the most fair way and efficient way to look at our needs.
Are there any other thoughts? I think...
Can you speak to the process of why you didn't request this before? I mean, why, is it just because you've seen the workload and how it's sorting out with the distribution that you're asking at this? I mean, you've probably always been overworked, but at this time.
Well, this is the first, you gotta remember, this is the first year we've gone through the iPad process, and I think that just really opened our eyes to the need and what's gonna happen going forward in dealing with that.
The bulk of the materials and the products.
Yeah, and the process. I think that was the tipping point.
Yeah, sure. And I certainly, I completely empathize that unforeseen, particularly when we're doing something new as you are doing this, these initiatives, that unforeseen needs arise, and we certainly see it throughout the year all the time with, when classrooms get bigger than we intend them to at the beginning of the year, our needs repairs and things like that. So there is precedent for adding outside of that process, and I guess what I'm trying to wrap my head around is whether or not this item, for me, rises to that level. I think, and only speaking for myself at the moment, I could absolutely support this for the current year. I'm not sure I wanna make it a permanent addition to the staff until I see the larger, the larger budget when we look at that at the end of the year. So for myself, I think I could, seeing the needs and seeing that they're now and that we're planning ahead, and I think, Mr. Robichaud, you made a lot of really good points. I don't wanna deny those services now when we feel like we need them, but I'm really hesitant to put something permanently until I see a larger budget process. So that's where I am personally. I don't, but the board makes the motion and decides if they wanna add that permanently or not add it. That's somebody else's motion. Since there's not an obvious motion, it leaves us in a position of the board deciding what motion somebody wants to make.
I would make the motion to approve this position for this fiscal year with reconsideration of the budget for next year. I'm pleased I'm stating what you suggested, which I agree with.
It is. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on that item?
Does that potentially limit us to the quality of individual that's gonna take this position for the next nine months?
Are they gonna give up a quality job to come and do this for nine months, knowing that they potentially could be terminated nine months later?
Absolutely, that'll have an impact, sure. You know, it's hard. It's hard for somebody to take a job that they know isn't permanent, but it's also a compromise, so.
What happens if our secretaries are in a union? Is this something that a secretary can bump over to, and then should that get terminated, they can bump back to their position?
And it kinda starts a domino effect, or is that accurate?
Nicole might have to speak to the specific bumping process, but yes, if there were a current clerical position person taking this job, if this job was eliminated, they'd have bumping rights to another job. I don't know that they'd necessarily get their same job back, but they would have bumping rights.
And then it would be, if they, if we decided not to go with it, then the least senior secretary would be taken off.
Okay. I saw Colleen come up for added input. I don't know if she wanted to say something.
I just wanted to remind Maria that if we're going to move forward and we're gonna move the iPads down to the elementary, if that is the direction that we're going, which I know we have to have a conversation with the board about, that would produce a more need, a continual need for the secretary. And the other thing is, is that currently, we're having one person do both jobs. And the reality is, is this poor one person, I'm, you know, just watching from the outside, is trying to do this person's job, this person's job. So at the same time, things like iPads that have been broken and et cetera need to be processed. We don't really have somebody to do it, so the need is, you know, the need is much larger than we originally thought it would be. So I guess, you know, my thought is, is that you need to realize that if we're gonna continue to move forward, we're gonna bring those iPads down, that need isn't gonna change. And the other thing is, like you said, if you put a position that's short-term like that, you know, who's going to apply for that, you know, knowing that they might not have a position? It depends on if the board in their mind is thinking that we will move this down to the elementary, which I think was part of our plan. And we just have not finalized that with the board.
Mr. Chair, I have to ask a question. We talk a lot about the iPad initiative. There must be other factors that we have to consider in this process, and, you know, we've talked about the business issue. I wanna talk about the technology. What is not getting done because of the absence of this position? And away from the iPad initiative.
And away from the iPad initiative. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, that's not a year-long process. It's doing with it and then monitoring or whatever. But talk more about what's, what's missing in the technology area that's not getting done because this position is not there.
I, I think the conversation more is about what's not getting done in the business area, because fortunately for us, we've been pulling this person to do the technology piece. And I understand that there are, because she's with us on the technology realm, she's not getting the business part done. So because we have her doing the inventory and, and working, it's been a struggle for her to get down the business piece, which is kind of really where this all stemmed from in the beginning.
So the technology...
There are, there are other pieces of technology, yes.
I, I have to...
Yes, yes, because this person also has to inventory all the technology equipment. She's behind on that, so she's now trying to fit that in. And there are only limited times she can do that because students are in session. So she has to wait for days when kids aren't there to go out and inventory and put the tags on all the equipment. She supports now Maria and six technology staff, when we used to have two or three. So, I mean, there's just, that department has just grown. And with that comes all that support that surrounds that. Do you have any other input, Maria?
Just inventory software and, and just keeping orders into in line and, and record keeping, all the paperwork that comes along with everything, just is just getting put behind it.
Thank you, Maria. My sense, or right now, I guess I don't know, but I have a sense of the board and how they feel about, uh, doing it for this year versus doing it permanently. Just as a suggestion, one way so that we could just, we can either informally pull that, or we could just, if somebody wanted to...
Do a motion, no, we...
What was that?
A motion and a second.
We have a motion for one year, but so, so what I'm trying to suggest is if we wanted to change that, the way to do that is with an amendment to the original motion. So, so that would give us a sense to, to pull ourselves on making this permanent versus a, a one-year, uh, position, and then, and then move forward on that motion to, to put it in. Because I'm sensing that's where the consternation is, is whether or not it should be one year or permanent. But, but, uh, but maybe there isn't that much and we want to keep it at one year. And I just want to throw that out there as a suggestion. Mr. Olson?
Now, when you say permanent now, when we go through budget, this could be, that person could be laid off July 1st, right? So it's permanent, but not permanent, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess it's whether or not we review it automatically, or if we, if somebody has to suggest this as a cut. That's, that's, uh, that's the difference between the two.
I'd like to offer amendment to, uh, take that stipulation out of the...
For the one year?
For the one year.
So the, so the amendment is to the original motion such, uh, such that the position would be permanent instead of, oh, uh, uh, simply for this academic year? That's, uh, the amendment that has been moved. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to that amendment. Uh, any further discussion on that amendment?
Because we still have that option of...
Absolutely.
You know, maybe they might feel like somebody brought up that it's more security. And it'll be part of our budget process beginning next year, right? We'll be talking. Okay.
So, uh, we have a, a motion and a second to amend the original motion such that position would be permanent as opposed to, to one year. Is there further discussion on that amendment? Does everyone understand the amendment and what, and what we're, so we're taking vote, not on whether or not to fill the position, but what, what the motion will be. A yes vote to this amendment will mean that the position would be permanent. The action would, would be permanent, and a no vote would be for, for one year. Just, I'm just trying to be clear on what we're voting on, okay? Hearing that, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Yes. Uh, Tom?
No.
Jason?
No.
Yvette?
No.
Myself? I? Jerry?
No.
Andrea?
No.
Chad?
Yes, aye.
Yet fails, uh, two, five.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk, and thank you all for that. Um, so we now have a motion in front of us, uh, to, to, um, put in a technology clerical staff for, uh, for this academic year, and then it will be examined, uh, in our ordinary budget process for, for the future. Um, any further discussion on that action? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Okay, uh, Tom?
No.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself?
No.
Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
No.
Chad?
Can I just make sure I know what I'm voting for here, right?
This, this would put the position in for the, for this academic year.
Thank you, aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes four, three.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Motion carries, uh, and that brings us then to item number 12, the substitute rates of pay.
The, um, rates that you see in there, we, we check to see what our surrounding districts are paying their substitute rate, so we try to stay competitive with them, and so that's what we've done, we've made a comparison. And then we'd like to increase our rate of pay for our subs for about, to about six, from a hundred and ten dollars per day to a hundred and sixteen dollars per day. And you can see what the projected cost would be with that added at the very end of the memo.
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Uh, any questions or further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Uh, Tom, now, this is not, we're not associated with a staffing organization.
That's correct.
Staffing company.
This is, we're hiring our own subs, that is correct.
Can I ask, um, what the... The history or the, the situation of obtain, are we obtaining as many subs as we need?
No, uh, I certainly invite Nicole Yocum up, Mr. Chair. He'd like to come up and talk a little about that. I think it's worth mentioning about our sub shortage and...
Do a little community service to recruit substitutes.
Yeah, it might be a little, a good time to say something positive about our schools and recruits and stuff, so come on.
Good evening. Um, this last year, this past year and this current year, we have been struggling with obtaining enough substitutes for both our certified staff and our non-certified staff. Um, the great thing about the economy right now is that unemployment is very low, um, but that makes it very difficult for us to find temporary people to come in and work, um, on a, on a day-to-day or on a casual basis. And so our hope is that by increasing the daily rate for our certified staff and the hourly rate for our non-certified staff, we can try and be a little more competitive with our neighbors, um, and also be more competitive with local businesses.
Nicole, do you know what these rates are for any surrounding districts?
Right now, um, Northfield is currently at one sixteen, um, per day for their certified staff. Um, many districts, many of our neighbors are going to a, um, a company, as Richard asked a little bit earlier, a temp, kind of a temp agency or a company that you contract out with to hire substitutes on a daily basis. So with those individuals, we, we almost, we, we, we try to compete with them, but it's not very easy because they don't have the same restrictions as we do as a, as a result of, um, the Affordable Care Act. Um, they're able to work five days a week, whereas we need to restrict them to, um, thirty hours a week or less because of the healthcare issue. Um, and then in addition to that, they also, these, um, other contract companies will offer hiring bonuses and various incentives to their on-call substitutes in order to get them to sign up to work for them. And we don't, so we, we have a hard time competing with those, um, co-companies.
Nicole, what's the, what's the payout rate, or what's somebody like that making who's through that agency?
Uh, they could be making the same. They could be making, oh, a hundred and sixteen dollars per day, but they're able to work five days a week, uh, or also get benefits.
What would happen in terms of a, a long-term sub? A number of years ago, I filled in for a, a teacher that was, had a medical issue, and I was there for about eight weeks. Are we able to deal with that kind of situation?
Yes, when we hire an individual on a long-term subposition where they commit to us, then we actually pay them for their, um, experience and their education that they have. Most times those people will, all the time, if they're working more than fifteen consecutive days, they already have a cer- a s- a regular teaching license versus a short-call sub-license. So we do pay them for their education and experience.
Nicole, the majority of our, um, substitute staff, are they retired educators?
Uh, I wouldn't say the majority of them, but a good number of them are. I like to joke and say that's one of our e- exit interviews, is signing them up to be substitute teachers, but we don't, we don't get all of them.
So when, when we say we have a shortage of substitute staff, does that literally mean that we have a classroom that's taking somebody out of the office to go chaperoning or, or oversee that class for the day? I mean, i- if we're short, where's the shortage and, and who covers that?
Uh, so if we're short, there's, there's a, there's a lot of different scenarios that can happen. We put together, um, le- leadership team put together a list of about twelve different options. So for example, we can take a current certified individual who's not assigned to a classroom and reassign them for the day to a, an, a classroom. So our priority would be a classroom teacher. So for example, if we have a Title I teacher who generally either co-teaches or pulls students out to work with them, we then reassign them for the day to a second-grade classroom, for example, and then we cancel Title I services for that day, or try to work, work in a different way to get them the Title I services. So that's one scenario. Um, another scenario would be to use, um, certain interventionists that work, um, that aren't necessarily assigned to a regular classroom teacher. Um, this year, we have been struggling just because we're so in need of them, where we've had to actually split up classrooms and give current teachers more kids, um, on a, kind of at a whim, right away in the morning. Um, and then in some cases, principals go in and supervise the classroom until we can find a replacement.
Are the teachers teaching, or are they just babysitting?
We expect them to be teaching.
Teach that subject, or, or what? If it's a science teacher's out, do you put a FIAE teacher in?
If the science, i- if any teacher is out, they're expected to have lesson plans for the day, for the sub. Um, even, even if it's a, if they call in sick, so it's a last-minute notice, they do have kind of a generic plan for the day that they, um, provide to the substitutes. So there's a, there's a general guideline on what needs to be gone over for the day.
All those subs have to be licensed people, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And do you think this increase will actually change the shortage? I mean, do you actually think it moves the needle?
We're hopeful. Um, like I said, this is the, the rate of Northfield, and so we did hear a little bit of, um, information that we were losing some people in Northfield because we were paying six dollars less per day. So we're hopeful that that will help, um, but we don't know. It's hard, it's hard to say. It's hard to say how many people are out there available and just not, um, signing up.
A regular teacher, what do they get paid per day, a regular teacher? Or is that a hard question?
Well, you know, it varies because it will depend on their, their credentials and their years of teaching experience.
How about like a medium teacher, if there's such a thing, you know?
What's the, what's the divisor that you use for the daily rate of pay? One eighty-two? Just take the, the rate divided by one eighty-two, is that right?
One eighty-five.
One eighty-five, sorry.
So their annual salary divided by one eighty-five.
So you can go to any of those cells in the teacher pay scale? And so you just, we pluck one of those scales, divide it by one eighty-five, and that would tell you what their daily rate is?
Yeah, our, uh, starting, a new teacher coming to us with, um, just out of college and no teaching experience will earn a, around a hundred and ninety dollars a day.
Just a new teacher?
Yep.
Any other questions for, for Nicole? We've been discussing for a while, and I don't believe we have a motion and a second, but correct me if I'm wrong. We do have a motion and a second. Glad I didn't ask for a game. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I was sort of negligent, I forgot to add this at the beginning on my report, but I would add that we did discuss the marching band, the Crusaders at the Finance Committee. There was, they brought a proposal to ask for transportation, um, funding, and Finance Committee members strongly encouraged them to come back to the board with a proposal to fund the band and incorporate it as a school marching band. So I believe that's coming to us at the next...
Yep.
Board meeting, as soon as the next board meeting. So, uh, maybe if people are interested, we can also discuss it at the work session.
And it's for the following year, it's not for the future.
So we did not vote on that. It was on the agenda of the Finance Committee, but we did not vote on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, um, this brings us then to item eight C, uh, starting with our enrollment report. Uh, it looks like our numbers are creeped up a little bit in October from September, but mostly holding very stable. Uh, any questions on the enrollment report? All right, hearing none, um, that brings us then, uh, to the financial report. Uh, Nicole, do you want to, please do that.
The first report you have are the comparative financial reports that the Finance Committee reviews every meeting. Um, they compare our month-to-date from last year to our month-to-date of this year, and our year-to-date from last year to our year-to-date of this year. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions on any of those items. They're pretty standard. What you see there that might be negative are, uh... Received, receivables and auditing, it's just the word required. The right amounts of money into the right... Don't get reversed in the... Reverse the same period. So... We look first at the budget at three percent, percent of the base bid and alternate, so that's seventy-one, four sixty. We have to take our first bond payment out of the proceeds, so that was eighty-seven thousand, five thirty-five. We had financing costs of eleven thousand, three twelve, and then attorney's fees and the... We had financing costs of eleven thousand, three twelve and then attorney's fees in the last two columns, Knutson, Flynn and Dean's and Barnes and Thornburg. So the total cost projected project, budget cost for this project is two million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, seven fifty-seven. So then underneath of that you will start to see all the expenses as we incur them and which category they're being paid out of, so we can kind of follow along and make sure we're staying on track. If you look at the total expenses to date, the second blue line, you can see for the FEC, we have not, as of this date, we had not paid any construction pay apps yet. Our architects' fees are, um, almost all paid here. We actually had a little bit of a coding issue, so a little overpaid that belongs in the lower section. And then our contingency fees, we've paid, uh, a couple of those different types of expenses. We haven't made our bond payment yet, but we've paid the rest, Lers and the legal fees. So any questions on that part before I move to the bottom?
So you paid all the architect's fees already?
Not all, because if you look down at the district office, we actually need to pay two hundred and sixty-nine, five fifty to the district office and we've only paid two hundred and forty thousand. So we have twenty-nine thousand there, but that six thousand actually needs to be moved down to the lower level. So we only have about twenty-three thousand left to pay on architect fees.
Was that in the contract?
Yes, that was a set amount.
Is it about the payment amount at the time? Because they still have to do project supervision.
Uh, they're doing, what they're doing now is reviewing pay apps, yep. But the bulk of their work is done. Okay, so on the bottom, same types of scenarios, you've got the project budget for all of those same categories and then the payments that we made last year by category and then the expenses to date, you can see that we're have not, as of this date, again, not paid any pay apps. We've gotten, since then, I think we've gotten four pay apps and two for each project. And, um, contingency fees and no bond payment coming out of there, but then legal and, uh, financial and consultant fees. So the column we're concerned about is the contingency fees column because that, um, column is supposed to cover, uh, several items. There's some testing for, um, the soil, the concrete, the steel. There's commissioning that needs to be done on the HVAC system throughout the project. Our permit fees to the city for getting the project permits through and then the controls that you've delayed action on for actually creating or getting the controls into the two buildings for the HVAC systems. So at this point, I think we've talked about this again at the two committees, but we are about sixty thousand dollars over in total for both projects in that particular category. Um, if you want me to go through the specifics, I can for you. If that's helpful.
Colleen, the sixty thousand over and, and maybe this is for Kevin also, um, that really doesn't include any change orders.
It does not.
And the contingency fund is typically for change orders or, or unforeseen issues.
What we set the contingency fund up for were these items, not for change orders. I think, well, I guess I take that back. Maybe there was a misunderstanding. I think it was, there might have been an understanding on some people that it included all of these items plus change orders. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, I think the it, I think the, the idea for the contingency fund is primarily for change orders with the idea that these would also fit in.
Yeah.
But so really the whole thing is over change orders and whatever these numbers were that were specified.
Correct.
So how did we think that all that was going to fit in three percent contingency when they, when I INS, ISG started at ten percent? They went down to three percent. At the, uh, special board meeting at the district office, I believe that was in July, Chairman Engbrek asked the two ISG folks, is three percent in your opinion enough? And they came back and said, um, we believe so and then they educated us on the three different change order classifications. How, how did we, how did? I, I've never heard that all this is wrapped up into three percent. I, I have no clue and, and quite honestly, I look forward to the discussion of what are we gonna cut to make this work? Because I have no clue how this works. I truly mean that. So I'll be quiet and let everybody else try.
I, um, I, I, I've been, so I, I just talked to Todd about this this past week, um, and, uh, expressed my frustration in words that I won't use tonight. This is a difficult project to move forward and we discussed it for good years aboard before we decided that it was appropriate to do. And it feels like the kind of product where I's had to be dotted and T's had to be crossed and I remember, specifically the conversation Chad's referring to and, and it's very frustrating to me. It's frustrating me to me because at this moment, it, it, it just feels like we didn't really know what we were doing. Um, and the numbers here don't change for me at all whether or not this is a good project because the numbers here are really kind of small to the size of the whole project, but, but it really frustrates me that, um, that we're at this point and we didn't quite know what it was going to cost us to do, even if those changes are frankly very small compared to the scope of the whole thing. I, I, uh, it is not yet clear to me where my frustration lies, to be honest. I, I don't know if that lies in the district or if it lies with I, uh, um, ISG or some combination of the two, but my frustration is there and, and I want to figure that out. Cause I think when you're doing a difficult project like this, one thing you do have to do is, is to feel like you, you at least have the, the, the the sense of what things are gonna cost sort of down and, and if something goes over, it should feel like something unexpected and from what I can tell so far that this is heating and cooling control systems and, and this couldn't possibly have been unexpected. And that's very frustrating to me. Uh, so I guess I'm just gonna express that and, and I'll continue to express that until I feel like I have an answer for that. Again, for me, to be very clear, this is not about whether or not these projects should have gone forward. Uh, the amounts don't, uh, the amounts that we're talking about don't change whether or not this was a good project. I don't share Chad's concern about what we're gonna cut. The, the finances of this just should can easily absorb that kind of thing. We're, we're not losing a teacher over this. Uh, so I don't share those concerns, but I really do. When, when you're doing something that's difficult, uh, um, to describe why it's important to the community, you gotta feel like you know, you can say with confidence that, that we've covered all the bases and, and, uh, nothing about what I'm seeing changes the fundamentals, but it does make it feel like it's just harder to convey that story. And, uh, I frankly don't like being put in that position, right? I, I, um, put myself out in front of this community on many occasions to, to say this is what we should do and we know what we're doing and, and it makes me upset that, um, that I have to come back to this again. Having said that, the projects are good. They're good for our schools. We can afford them. They're a good investment from my opinion. Um, and there's no reason, I mean, we're certainly gonna, uh, approve the HVACs, but, uh, I can't not express that, that frustration. Um, I'm still not sure where that frustration lies, um, but, uh, I, I know it belongs someplace.
Mr. Chair, I'll just add that when I said cut, I certainly did not mean a staff member, a teacher of anything of that nature. I meant more so. Um, i- is there a potential to scale back, um, something that might be wanted, not needed within the scope of the project to get it to budget? Certainly not a staff member, anything of that nature.
Uh, yeah, please, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chair, we have, uh, two items that have been brought forth for HVAC controls. I think it's something like close to ninety thousand dollars for those two items. And we have not the contingency fund to pay for those. Is that correct?
It's not, it, it's not budgeted in the contingency fund, right? So we'd have to increase the budget. It would come out of, at this point, if you don't make changes as Chad has suggested, it would come out of operating capital.
Which is a very tight budget to begin with.
We have about two hundred thousand sitting there right now. If we take into account everything that's been spent year to date and what's projected to come out of there for this project.
Of course, sitting on a facilities committee, that list of projects would easily be consumed very quickly at twenty thousand dollars. So the options we, the projects, we're, we're not gonna open windows and build fires in the middle of the buildings, so they're worried. That, we're probably left with no choice but to approve those. Two items, the HVAC controls for the
Yes.
District office
Yes.
But we still don't know how we're gonna make up that ninety thousand dollars, roughly ninety thousand.
It's about sixty. What we're short is about sixty.
If you want to, I think it's okay to talk a little bit about those alternatives that we had earlier. Do you wanna talk about those a little, uh, just so you guys have that to consider when you move ahead?
I please, yeah, Mr. Wilson. But this, with my experience, this was, um, I mean, I, I believe in the projects. I mean, a hundred percent. I mean, that's, I pushed them hard, everybody knows that, because we need these buildings. But what I'm used to when, when bids, it's a complete bid. Then for some reason, they said time of, of essence, you didn't get the permit fees, right? That, that was not in the base bid, right?
Correct.
And the whack and sack.
That's included in the permit fee. Yep.
And then the controls, you pulled that out. Then I think Jerry said, uh, one quarter of the project is done. Well, we gotta, you know, I don't know if that's correct or not, let's say it is, but we got three quarters. We got change orders. We've already been told that maybe something's coming down the pipe.
Correct.
We're already over on the three percent. Now we're really gonna be over. So what is the final, we don't know the final figure.
Right.
And I, I'm confused of why they submitted a bid without, I've been saying that for a while now, wasn't a complete bid.
You mean why the permits were pulled out?
Right.
They were in the original bid specs and the contractors were calling saying, we can't get numbers from the city. And if I can't get numbers from the city, what am I gonna put into my bid? It's probably gonna be high because I'm not gonna take a loss on this. So the decision was made to pull those out so that we didn't pay more in the end than what we should have paid for permits.
But still you should have, they should have went down and basically camped on their doorstep and says, we need a figure. We need a figure. Now that's, it's a lot of money, not five hundred dollars or a thousand.
Yeah, we would have paid this regardless.
Well, yeah, but it would have been in the base bid and we still had maybe the three percent contingency not used.
Yeah, we didn't have any control over what the city was doing, so unfortunately that was outside of what we can do. The bids are due on a specific date. You have to turn in a bid with all of the information or you're not a qualified bidder. So we wouldn't, contractors would not have submitted a bid if they didn't have the information, all the information.
In my opinion, it wasn't ready to be submitted to us. They didn't have it. And that's, you know, almost forty years of experience. I'm sorry, but it was not, oh, by the way, we have this.
It would, then we would have had to re-bid, say we're gonna re-bid and delay the process. We could have, we could have done that.
What's gonna come down? Oh, we have to pay for bathroom fixtures. Or something, you know, what's, what's not in the bid? We don't know. This, this stuff wasn't the bid. What else is not in the bid that's gonna show up?
Nothing as far as I know.
I didn't know about this.
Were, were you aware that the control was not in the bid? I think the staff here were aware of that. They took it out of the bid because they didn't want the people that were bidding to overbid and you would pay a higher amount than we're paying now for those. I think the intent was to try to save money on the bid, is my understanding.
Again, I go back to why did we pull out the steel, the concrete?
No, no.
Why didn't we pull out more stuff?
No, the testing that has to be done on the soil and the concrete and the steelwork, that's mandated that that has to be paid by owner and not part of the bid because you don't want the contractor hiring their own firm to test their product. You can understand that. Has to be done by an independent third party. So that could not be included in the bid. The same with the commissioning of the HVAC systems. Again, you don't want the contractor testing its own system throughout the whole process. That has to be done by an independent third party. You would want that, I would think you would want that. So we wanna make sure that the work is being done properly so that we don't run into trouble down the road when things don't work. So those two things were not included in the bid and typically would not be included in the bid. Matter of fact, one of them can't be included by law.
So that'd be part of the contingency.
Right.
That was under budgeted, is the impression that I'm getting from the folks, that that was even when we brought that point up.
And we had a big discussion about the contingency. I mean, I don't know anything about construction. It was the one thing that stuck out in my mind was the contingency. I think it might be the only question I asked that night was about the contingency and Jason reiterated that point and there was a lengthy conversation about that. And I, for one, am feeling like that contingency was quoted as ten percent. It was lowered and I feel like it was lowered because we were over budget and we needed to find a way to get the board to approve going forward and cutting the contingency was one of those ways. And now we're in a huge predicament here. And I, for one, have lost a lot of trust.
Why was the, why did the original document say ten percent contingency and we ended up at three percent?
I have no idea. My notes say ten percent.
But you, we all know that meeting, it was three percent.
Yeah.
The board approved, the board approved three percent.
Said, maybe we should rethink that. I just feel like we needed to push through. You guys had to find a way to get the extra five hundred thousand budgeted and I feel like maybe the contingency was part of that.
I don't, that wasn't the intent from my perspective. There's money in operating capital. If that was the case, that was not, that was not the intent at all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
We, we have an approved budget for the two projects.
Correct.
It looks as if we're gonna go over that budget.
Correct.
Because of the contingency and other things, whether they were in the, the original bid or not, I, I'm confused as to why the controls were not part of the bid. You know, just, you're gonna heat the building, you're gonna air condition it, why the controls were not in there, that's. I, I'm confused about that, but I'm not asking for an answer at this point.
I can explain if you want.
That's okay, Colleen, I, I think you. But we have an approved budget. At which point do you and Kevin and Todd anticipate, probably more Todd and Kevin, that we're gonna have a good handle on where this, these two projects are? Because I'm not gonna sit up here as a board member and approve any over expenditures over what we've approved for these two projects right now. Going back to what Chad says, if in fact we don't have the money to, to complete the projects, we're gonna have to cut somewhere. And at what point do you anticipate that that's gonna come to the board so we can make those decisions?
As, as I understand it from Kevin today in our discussions, that the decisions to make cuts to the projects needs to happen ASAP. Because we're talking about some things that will now, for example, in-floor heat at the district office, if that needs to go, we need to make that decision now because they're about ready to pour concrete. So we're gonna have to meet very, very soon.
But now you're changing the scope of the project.
You either balance the budget with cutting some of the scope of the project or allocating additional dollars. I mean, those are your two choices. So you gotta decide which way you wanna go.
This is, this is not the way the project should go. While we get single plate glass, then double plate or triple. Why would we do that?
I think you're going to look at things that, um, are, won't necessarily affect the usability of the building. In-floor heat's not going to make a difference to us being able to do our jobs and that, making the functionality of that building.
But it's more even heat.
Well, you got, you got a tough choice here. Do you wanna add budgets or do you wanna have in-floor heat?
So are we gonna have to purchase slitters for staff people because you might get a
Well, Richard, Richard, in-floor heat might be kind of Cadillac type of thing and, and the regular heat that the majority of people in commercial institutions have is forced heat.
But this is the, this is the original design, I'm not where, to me
That actually was
We're cheapening it right now.
Well, that was, that was in and out and in and out and in and out. That was something that we were kind of trying to decide. Was I considered more of a want versus a need? So I think if that's, we're at the point where we So I think if that's, we're at the point where we have to look at some of those wants and decide if they're needs or wants.
I thought it was decided long ago to this board.
Yep.
And we voted on this, on the design.
Right, but we're here today. We gotta decide how we're going to move forward.
What I hear Jerry's suggesting maybe is that we come up with two options. One is a revised budget. And the other would be a, a budget that's the same but with possible.
Yeah, we could bring you the list of, Kevin's identified a list of items that we could consider that would actually put us back in budget and give us a little extra. So we could bring those to whomever, if that's the facilities committee or the board, I'm not sure.
A revised budget, the funds come from where?
Operating capital.
Operating capital's part of the general fund or that's part of?
Its own fund balance.
So the five hundred thousand that we took out of, out of a fund earlier this year, what fund did that come out of?
I'm not sure which five hundred thousand you're talking about. Let me see if I can find.
I thought Kevin had like five hundred eighty-one thousand allocated to him annually in.
I think it's operating capital, but we took money from several different sources, so I just wanna be sure that.
Yeah, I apologize, I don't know how many funds there are.
I'm responding to appropriately.
And Kevin might know. He might not know. Kevin's feeling ill back there.
I think, Chad, you're talking about the operating capital.
So just walk me through this. I thought that his operating capital fund was approximately five hundred and eighty to six hundred thousand for the year.
Yep, every year.
And I thought we were taking five hundred thousand from that fund that was going towards essentially the new parking lot type area out at the middle school DO. And then I thought we're also taking two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of the textbook fund. So if, i- i- am I confused on, on the operating capital account? Is I don't know, where, where would that, first of all, where's that extra two hundred thousand you said earlier in the operating capital account? And, and if there's more money there that we would dip into, what, what is that money? Am I making sense?
The fund balance and operating capital, we didn't spend it all last year, so some of that carried over.
Okay.
There were just simply expenses that weren't made. We've updated budgets for deferred maintenance and operating capital, so when I looked at it today, it appears that there's an extra two hundred thousand sitting there.
Okay.
At this point.
So there's. So if I'm kinda throwing this together right, summarizing it, Kevin's operating capital fund this year would've been approximately eight hundred thousand?
No.
And we're gonna take five hundred?
No.
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 So it's still six hundred, but there's two hundred that carry forward.
Right, from last year that didn't get set.
Okay, so his budget would've still been about six hundred, give or take.
Right.
But just that fund balance would've been increased by two hundred.
Correct.
Okay. And, and what, um, what gives us what gives us confidence that we really know all the further expenditures without any change orders? And, and do we have any guesstimate as far as what the change orders might tally? Richard, you had, you had made, mentioned that there might be a change order coming. Is that something you, that you really know or is that?
Possibly, there, I mean, right now, there's small amounts. But when you take a whole bunch of small amounts, guess what? It's, you know.
I, I, I didn't know if the facilities committee had made mention of that or, or know something.
Nothing officially is cut.
Okay.
About six thousand. There's two change orders right now that, you know, have a better than likely chance that they'll come through, about six thousand. Most, according to Kevin and the experts, most of the change orders occur with the groundwork and the, where, what we've come through so far. Because those are the areas that you simply don't know. You can, you can guess and do the samples, soil samples and all of that, but that's generally where most of the change orders come through.
So.
And connecting to the buildings, so.
You're thinking, or, or you and Kevin, I, Kevin's back there, but are you thinking owner-directed change orders are very minimal?
I can't guarantee anything going forward. I don't think we're gonna suggest anything.
That's what I mean, owner, as in the school district.
Yeah, there's nothing, we didn't suggest these two. We're not suggesting any change orders going forward. We think the plans are okay the way they are. Unless we do some value engineering and pull out some things to help with the budget.
We do have a change order, something about some fencing.
Yeah, that would be a negative change.
Right, a negative, so that's plus for us.
Right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, Mr. Chair.
If I could, I'd like to ask our superintendent, where do we go from here? As the person who is overseeing all this, what, you've heard the discussion from the board, heard some obvious frustrations and some considerations that we're not gonna exceed the budget. So where do we go from here?
Well, there are two, let me just put the, the one option, depends on, I don't wanna speak for all the board members because you all have different ideas with it. If you wanna stick within the budget parameters, you, we have a, we have a roof alternative and we also have the in-floor heating alternative. And combined, that would save the district about ninety thousand dollars of the budget process. So you'd go back, so then you'd have theoretically about thirty thousand left in your contingency. If you're using percentages and you do math, probability, if you think that six thousand dollars is your change order for the first quarter and you multiply that by four, then you're looking at twenty-four, thirty thousand dollars more in change orders. Now, in likelihood that the change orders don't occur, then of course, we would put that money back. So those are two options that wouldn't, they wouldn't endanger the integrity of the prod, product, of the project. It would just give you a different roof. We'd be using probably the same company, but it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a Garland roof. And you would also lose in-floor heating, of course.
Excuse me, just a, can we change that in the middle?
Yep, right now, we can. Yep.
We bid a specific, for a specific roof. Now, we have the prerogative to change that next stream?
Well, Kevin, that's a question that I'm gonna send his way and talk to the archi, we're also gonna talk to the architects Wednesday and have that conversation with that, so. And before Kevin talks, so I just wanna throw the other thing out there too. The other parameter that you could get, which I would suggest, again, this is only a suggestion, is that Colleen and I visit with the architects, come up with what we believe is the appropriate budget that we think is right. Because I also believe that the, the dollars spent on the HVAC system, permits and everything else should be part of the full budget package. And then come up with your own separate contingency fund strictly for change orders. And then we would come back with a proposal. It would mean allocating more operating capital. We'd have to tell you what that is. But that would be the other option if you didn't, if you did not want to go with the two alternates of the roof, okay? So what would the roof?
When the district off, office was bid out, there were alternates put in the package. Some, they were as listed in the package. It was a, I believe, a forty-nine thousand dollars, some odd dollar amount of a deduct to go to a TPO roof. Then there was also a line item in there for a deduct to go with deleting the in-floor heat. Now, I believe, was around thirty-six thousand.
So by making those changes ourselves to the original project, we're not jeopardizing the integrity of the bidding process?
Correct. They were bid out ahead of time to know the, yep.
Okay, right, thanks, Kevin.
Part of value engineering, yes.
Kevin, that Garland roof, that is, is that roof on every other square foot of every other roof of all of our buildings? Or is it on everything at the middle school and everything at the high school?
We've used Garland as standard across the district. It's a premium standard. There are a couple roofs that are not Garland. Temporary bill, or temporary. Couple buildings that are shingles. They aren't an, they aren't a flat roof.
So everything with a flat roof, which these two buildings all have, correct?
Low slope roofs, low slope roofs in the district are Garland at this point.
And the reason they're Garland in the first place is because they're.
They're good roof, yes.
Life expectancy.
Thirty plus, thirty, thirty, thirty plus.
Then with this new possible change, what's the life?
The TPO, I'd have to double check on the life expectancy of this TPO. Since we set the standard on roofing, roofing companies have stepped up to the plate to now make single ply roofs to guarantee it thirty years and also, this is a single ply roof, the TPO would be.
One of the worst things you should change is the roof, in my opinion. It's a bad roof, guess what's gonna happen? Mold.
It's a new roof.
So what would be the timeline on this if we had to make those changes?
The roofing, we could go for a little bit. The in-floor heat, the decision should be made fairly quick. Is that will, that in, when you lay the concrete down for the pad, there's piping that needs to be put down, but before that, there's even insulation that gets put down underneath the concrete. So, middle school with concrete to be laid for the pad, we're looking a couple weeks out probably. Depending if the contra, eh, it all depends. If the contractor wants to wait till the roof is on, some like to do that. Especially when we start getting into these colder conditions, they might wait till the roof is on. So it could be a while for that. I'd have to double check. We're talking with the contractors tomorrow. I've regularly scheduled bi-weekly meetings. So we'll check on that tomorrow, see what kind of timeline he's giving us, timeline and all that. So that might give us a little bit of time, but I'll know more tomorrow after that meeting for that timeline.
Mr. Chair, is, is there anything prohibiting us from having, um, I don't know if you wanna call it an emergency work session or, or scheduling a new work session with regards to this and having the architects there? I, I have a hard time, um, back to your point of, you know, where to express your frustrations, this or that. INS, ISG, they, they weren't at our last work session. They weren't at our finance committee meetings where, I guess I, I should say, they're not at this. I have a hard time, you know, pointing the finger at them when, when they can't defend themselves or anything. We, we seem to not have a real solid, concrete reason why the contingency fund went from ten percent as a percentage down to three percent. I, I don't know. I'd be interested in that. I don't know if that's something we should have. I don't know if anything, anybody else is interested.
Well, I'm interested in it, but I don't know if it affects what we, the decision we have to make here in the near future. I would be very interested in it. I support your frustrations with where this decision was made and when in the bidding process to take these items out and they weren't in the contingency fund. But I feel like those issues, while important, aren't an impact on what we have to kinda do here in the near future. So I would support getting information on that, but I feel it's important that we move forward with approving these bids with a new budget or making the decisions with changes.
And my only thought to that is if we, per Kevin's statements.
Just mind if I just sort of weigh in on, on this before we go further. So I, I think there's a few things here. Obviously, HVAC is front of us tonight and I don't think anybody's suggesting that we should have a, a new construction without HVAC. So I don't see any reason not to look at that tonight. With regards to, and I, I'm not sure anybody suggested that, but we'll obviously look at that tonight. With regards to a, a, a special meeting, so, so the short answer is we can't. I think the day, the notice is probably seven days, give me a sense, five days. Five days is, is our, our notice. So we can do that. When is our next work session?
November ninth. November ninth.
November ninth. And so, so my question really is, is, is the ninth soon enough to make a decision on these change orders? And do we, are we firm on that? Because I think that's what sets the timeline that you're talking about, that if, if we're gonna do these change orders, is the ninth soon enough? If it's not, then I think Chad's suggestion is, is probably a good one. If the ninth is soon enough, then I'd rather not have a special meeting because I think that's, it's hard to get those out to the public and such things. So, so, so that's the key to me of whether or not that ninth is soon enough. And, and maybe that's something we learn tomorrow, Kevin. I, I'm not sure. Do you know whether or not at this moment, the ninth is early enough or is that, that's something that's not clear to you?
Or which answer?
So, so to decide whether or not we're gonna change any of the, like, the in-floor heating or some of these suggestions, is the ninth soon enough to know that?
Yes, the ninth is early enough.
All right, so that, that answers my, my question in terms of.
So do we make that special session then if we're gonna vote to change?
Right, so I think, then there, that's the next question, is that, that work session might need to have a, a piece to a change so that it can be a, um, a business meeting, have a vote on it if we need to, to think about some votes on that. And it's something that we can, we can make that, yeah.
I thought to call a meeting, you mean only three days.
If it's an emergency meeting, if you're just gonna do it like in this format, November ninth or earlier, I mean, if you wanna.
Well, this would be considered emergency, like we had a tornado go.
Right.
You could actually do it less than seventy-two hours, like we need a meeting tomorrow night. Or right now type of thing. But I think it's seventy-two hours. Theoretically, we call, we can hold a work session on Thursday.
Yep. I think the nice thing about going, and I don't disagree with you, just the five days, if we can do it with five days, gives the public plenty of notice ahead of time if they wanna participate. That's the only reason why.
The ninth is two weeks out. So, so I guess to my mind, as I'm thinking about it, is whether or not we're gonna do a meeting in one week from tonight or two weeks from tonight. And that, to me, seems to be determined by timelines that, are, are we pushing timelines such that two weeks out is, is, is too late to, to make some decisions as, as we're freezing, so that's.
And we'll confirm with the contractor.
Yeah, so I think let's make sure we're confirmed on that. The last, and, and I know for sure the board wouldn't like to get to the ninth and, and realize the decision's been taken out of our hands, so. So let's make sure on, on that and, and you'll confirm that tomorrow. And then, then if the board is comfortable, based upon that information, I'll make a call on whether or not we would schedule, schedule a, a special meeting before the next, uh, work session.
Mr. Chair, just to be certain, what the agenda would be for that special meeting? If it follows our work session or if we have a special meeting in between? Could you capture for us what that agenda would be?
Um. Thank you. I think that's a good thing to clarify. So, so to my mind, the, the board, I'm, I'm hearing from the board and myself personally, I, I think we're, we're looking for a discussion item, which is sort of the general status of the budget for the, um, for the, the building, the construction underway right now. So, so that wouldn't need to be an action item, that's a discussion item. But coming out of that discussion might be an action which may need to be acted on before the, if I'm understanding timelines, might, for instance, if we're gonna change to change the construction, that may need to happen before that. So the first discussion, as I would view this meeting at this moment in my head, please suggest other things, is a discussion on the general budget questions that we have, how we're gonna move forward with the budget for this project as a discussion item. And if there's a feeling I want to have, that, that we need to make changes to the construction as, as planned, I think that needs to be an action and so that can take place immediately after that, that discussion.
I think we would act on, I would also like to see a revised budget and have that option to act on that. That the district staff would approve in lieu of making the construction changes? Which would include where this additional funding would come from?
Absolutely, yeah. So I, I, I don't mean to pre, pre-decide.
Well, I have quality issues.
Yeah, exactly. I, I think that's exactly right, Yvette. And I'm sorry, thank you for clarifying that, because I don't wanna pre-decide that we're gonna make cuts to make these happen or if we're gonna raise the budget to do it. Those are both options to the board and, and I'd, I'd like to have a budget discussion before I make that decision personally and I think the board would.
Mr. Chair, would it also include Chad's frustration about the seven, ten percent discussion contingency?
I, I think that would be.
Where did that all come about? How did we get to where we're at?
Right. And, and, and so my feeling is that is a part of the larger budget discussion and I would ask ISG to be at this meeting. And that request would come pretty strongly. So, so that we can have that discussion.
Thank you for the clarification.
And thank you for those, those questions.
I would like to raise a point of clarification for myself. Should we need or choose to increase the budget to cover HVAC and whatever else it comes along with? Chad raised the question of what would we have to cut? And I, I know it wasn't, is, if we were to raise the budget, where would the funds to raise the budget come from? I, I think I might've understood capital.
Operating capital reserve.
Operating capital.
Yep.
So we're not, this is not in competition with, with positions.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But it could come out of general funds too, a part of it, right?
The board could decide that, for sure.
They could decide that, yeah.
Yeah. Should it is a question for the board to decide it, and anything can come out of the general fund, so.
I would not, my personal opinion would be not to advise that, but that's, the board can do it.
That's always a possibility.
And, and to even find out that a little bit more, if there is an increase in the budget and that's what the board decides, I would like to see what is going to be put aside for the next three, four years. in that capital that Kevin's not going to be able to do if we take money out of that budget. What are those things that are going to be, again, they have to be delayed, that, uh, we can't get to because we have to earmark the money to these two projects. Cause at the facilities committee, we've seen a number of things that have come up that, uh, are on the, um, planning stages.
Now, Colleen, you said something about extra two hundred thousand? Could you please explain that again?
Well, that.
Was that part of Kevin's budget or is it an extra two hundred thousand he's going to plan on or not really?
No, it was fund balance. It was carried over from last year of dollars that didn't get spent.
So Kevin's not using that money right now?
Correct.
So it's an extra two hundred thousand capital?
Right.
So we could, you know, the board could use that two hundred thousand?
For this project?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And it won't affect his budget or what Jerry brought up?
No.
Years?
No.
Because he wasn't counting on it?
Right.
Maybe we should make a clarification. It's not Kevin's budget.
Oh, okay. District's budget for capital. Thank you.
Kevin manages that budget.
It's our budget.
Colleen, can I ask one follow-up to that? He had two hundred thousand dollars that he didn't spend on that capital.
Well, I wouldn't say it was necessarily him because it's, you know, a, a two million dollar budget. So maybe the principals didn't buy all their equipment that they had budgeted or maybe we didn't buy all the library books that we had budgeted. So at the end of the year, there's always money left over because things just don't get spent to the full extent of the budget in any of our funds.
And do we not know that right until the end of June?
Correct. Actually, we don't even know until July or August because there are pending bills out there that you have to wait to come through. You don't get all invoices magically on June thirtieth. Bills.
What, what I'm getting at is this board approved twenty-five thousand dollars for additional grass seed and chemicals for, to, to beautify our landscape.
Yep.
Last year and kill clover and things of that nature. And so now I ask myself, well, two hundred thousand dollars was unspent. I didn't know it was not just his.
No, out of the entire operating capital budget, which he usually has about five hundred thousand allocated to him, but that's a two million dollar budget.
Well, and I'd like, since it was already raised, the, uh, what I call the weed and feed allocation, was twenty-five thousand dollars a year for ten years. So we're talking a quarter.
Ten years? I don't remember the ten years being part of it.
It was a permanent addition to the budget.
It was a permanent addition to the budget, I believe. And since that time, there was, uh, the notification that the state allocations for, and I won't say this accurately, so I won't try, but buildings and grounds and maintenance.
Long-term deferred.
Had in, has increased since we initially funded the, I think so. I guess at some point I was going to ask what happens to that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for ten years? Uh, should that come back to the general fund? Should that go to perhaps reach another, uh, try and meet another priority? That, uh, that could, I mean, I'm not advocating we grow dandelions. I'm advocating, I think the, the budget was increased and that, that could have been handled that way as, as opposed to withdrawing from the general fund twenty-five thousand dollars a year for ten years.
I believe that's already been moved to operating capital, if I remember right from your spreadsheets. Yep.
I think that one.
It has been removed from operating.
It's being proposed to move there as we look at the long-term facilities plan. Yes.
And I think too, in a bigger scope, that's a good question you bring up. When we get the deferred maintenance, when that revenue starts coming in, we're going to maximize that revenue and hopefully free up more operating capital.
I would like to move, make a motion at this time to approve the HVAC digital controls for the district office conference center and the Faribault educational center.
There's been a motion to approve the HVAC digital controls for the district office and conference center. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on that item?
Mr. Chair, we're taking up eight and nine at this time.
Yes, eight, eight, eight B nine, or eight B eight is what we're on right now. Uh, the motion has been made for eight B eight.
Can I combine them with nine?
The, the motion was not made to combine them, so. So at this, I think it's just easy to go two separate motions since one was made. Any further discussion on this item?
I have a question. Why are we not combining eight and nine?
I misspoke.
I think we'll go faster at this moment if we just take two motions. We can be voted on this motion and on to the next one if we're not asking that question. So let's just, let's just vote on the, the board, what the chair would suggest. This will be faster if we just vote on this motion and have another one. Are there any other comments other than whether or not we're combining? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
No.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Uh, Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Uh, Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, no. Jerry.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes six one.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, and so up next is eight B nine, the, the chair will entertain a motion uh, to approve the HVAC digital controls for Faribault Education Center.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, no. Jerry.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes six one.
Alright, thank you all very much. Um, and thank you all for your frank comments this evening. Uh, we'll be having more discussion on this, uh, at a future meeting.
Mr. Chair, can I just call, um, you probably want to have a motion to have a special session right now? Um, just to put that in there, we can always cancel that and then do an emergency session, but I think it would be, just follow the right protocol, might be good to, to have that in the generator.
So, um, so, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm going to suggest a motion for a special session on, let me get the dates here. On November ninth. Uh, a special session on November ninth. Uh, you're talking about with the regularly scheduled board session is what, was that your suggestion?
Yeah, it started at five thirty, then with the work session following.
I, I think we'll plan it for after the, I, I think we want the discussion uh, because the actions would, would be informed by the discussion. Although I, I take that back. It can happen at five thirty and we can have, there can be a discussion item on that. Yeah, thank you. Uh, so, so we'll say that's at five thirty with the work session following. Um, so the chair would entertain a motion for a special session of the, um, of a business meeting for the Faribault School Board on November ninth at five thirty at the district office.
Mr. Chair, is that waiting two weeks, does that put Kevin in a bind or the contractors?
All in all.
Oh, so that could change. I thought we were going to do it the second.
If, if we need to, the suggestion was if, if Kevin gets a clarification that says we need to move earlier, we certainly will.
We can't do that without a meeting.
The, the board chair can call an emergency meeting for the, for the entire school board. This is just, the reason why this is nice is because now the whole entire board is voting on this meeting, so if we have it, we have it.
But we leave it with the date, two options for a date or no? It'd be more or less to keep it at one date?
I think, I'm confident that the ninth is going to be in plenty of time.
I would like to include the second just in case in this motion, so we're not caught doing something we shouldn't be doing. We can cancel that.
Well, you can do another motion after this.
If INS isn't available on the ninth.
We, we have no motion at this point. The board has only suggested he'll entertain a motion, so there's been no motion made. So the board is welcome to make any motions they deem appropriate.
Motion for the ninth, but also the second, just in case.
As an alternative?
Alternative in case we get information from Kevin is that we can't wait until the ninth.
Logistically, I think we can either set a meeting or not. I'm not sure if we can suggest two possible dates. Why don't we just suggest the two and I can cancel? I know there's no problem with me canceling the meeting.
Yeah, we got it before.
So, uh, the chair's suggestion would be a, a motion, uh, to approve a meeting on both the second and the ninth.
I, I can't.
Two meetings. So, so, uh, does that, does that work for you for a motion? It was your motion. I, I don't want to.
Yes.
Your motion is a, for a meeting on the second and the ninth, uh, special sessions of the school board.
Leave it up to the chair to cancel the second under the advice of Todd and Kevin.
So we have a, a motion? Is there a second?
And that's five thirty at district office, to be precise.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And so I think Kevin and I will be in contact tomorrow and we'll, we'll confirm very shortly for everyone whether or not the second will be needed or not. Okay, so let me, uh, look at where I am in the board. So, okay, so we are now on to, uh, I'm just looking at this and seeing, uh, we're moving from the most controversial to the least controversial item of the evening. On a different note, uh, let me find myself here.
Yes.
We have, uh, um, a resolution, uh, for accepting gifts this evening. Um, I'll read off those gifts and then entertain a motion to approve. Uh, the gifts this evening, uh, for our approval are Neura knee guard, um, for the amount of fifteen dollars to the early childhoods family education, uh, for Carson's safety. Uh, the Guardian Law Group in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five dollars, uh, uh, for the newcomer center at Jefferson. Um, the Faribault Booster Club in the amount of six hundred and forty dollars, uh, for T-shirts for new district staff members. Uh, the Faribault Booster Club in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and ten cents. Four, uh, bottle, uh, four sets of bottle filler drinking fountains at the high school, um, uh, from, from Metcon and to Cybex, uh, for three tier dumbbell racks for the Phelitz Fitness Center. Um, uh, as well as eight hundred and twenty-five dollars for, to fitness, just, uh, so, fitness distributing for fifteen sets of dumbbells for the, um, Phelitz Fitness Center, uh, at the high school. Um, as always, we thank all members of the community, uh, whether their donations are large or small for their, uh, commitment to our, our students and the education of, of all children in Faribault. Uh, so we thank them for these donations. And with that, I will entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution sixteen oh five, accepting gifts. Uh, since this is a resolution, we need a roll call. Mr. Clerk.
Uh, Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes seven zero.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Uh, this brings us to other committee reports. Uh, no report from the insurance committee, wellness, Anne Marie. We waited a long time for this report. Make it worthwhile.
No pressure.
Let's make it brief, shall we? Uh, we kicked off our first meeting on Wednesday, October seventh. We are revisiting our very successful plan that we had last year. We're asking staff to fill out a survey, uh, just to see what they liked last year and what they want us to bring forward again and what they want us to, uh, move on from. And getting their suggestions too. So to date, we have two hundred and twenty-six submissions of, full of positive feedback. I know, I was super shocked. Faribault Public Schools is awesome. So we've got lots of employees, um, giving us their feedback and it's mostly positive. So we will review those results as a team next Wednesday. Yes, next Wednesday, right. I know, it's coming up fast. Any other comments for, I know Yvette was there at the, our wellness meeting?
No, I think the staff are very excited. They enjoyed the program last year and lots of energy going forward. We're discussing bottled water fountains at other facilities, so that's, that's a good thing.
You started a trend. So everybody wants them now, so that's good.
Just leave enough money in Kevin's capital.
Oh, no, we're not.
Out of the wellness.
Yeah, this is the employee wellness budget. So, yes, thank you.
They are nice.
Thank you for making that clarification. Yep, nothing out of operating capital. Okay, so, and that's it for my wellness committee report.
Alright, thank you. Which brings us to community ed report, which is awesome.
Great. I just thought I'd let you know, uh, we presented a while back to you at a work session. Our early childhood coordinator was there, Christine Gorman. And one of the things that came up was busing for preschool kids. And the ECSE, the special ed kids already get busing, but we thought we'd try this year to provide regular routes, um, through Faribault Schools transportation. And we are successfully doing so. Forty-four students are being bused. Um, it has been an overwhelmingly positive piece of what we've expanded, um, to our services for early childhood. So we're really happy to be offering that this year. We're hoping that it's going to work out, um, in our budget and that is a community education cost. So nothing back to the general fund. We're covering that. Just another piece of community ed service learning efforts are going on. I was just at a meeting today that Brian Coleman had facilitated with Jenny O, Turkey Store. Um, he's just doing great, a great deal of work with our businesses. And one of the things that, um, we talked about was just some possibility of tours of their, of their labs. And it's not just production with Jenny O. It's lab work, it's marketing, it's all sorts of upper management pieces that, um, some of our students want to see all of that. So he's taking some ALC students over there. We hope to be expanding into job shadowing, internships, all of those things. But Jenny O is, is really looking like they're going to be a great partner. Um, he's also getting students jobs, so we like that. He has been working with businesses one-on-one to facilitate job placements. Um, so we've gotten some kids some jobs and he's going to create some job boards, both at the high school and at the ALC. So I thought you'd want to know some of that, that's happening. So that's it.
Any other questions for Anne Marie? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Certainly worth the wait. Brings us to the facility committee. Kevin, please.
Good evening. We had our facility committee meeting last Thursday, October twenty-second at the district office. Um, we started out the meeting with an update of the progress of the FEC, the Faribault Education Center, being built onto the high school. Next, we went to the progress of the district office conference center, being built onto the middle school. We also discussed the long-range or the facility strategic plan. Um, doing some more updates on that along with the spreadsheet on long-range capital, the long-range capital facility plan, which has basically three sections to it, the, um, operating capital side of it, Chad? And then the, uh, new long-term facility maintenance side of it. Then also a third category, which we had some open discussion on, which is the long-term building projects list. Um, when some of the principals and updating their needs for their buildings or their wants, um, we talked about some possible building projects. That would be the third sheet on that. Capital spreadsheet or the spreadsheet of all the projects for the future. Questions, additions?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Kevin. Um, so my, uh, understanding, I, I've been having in my regular meetings with Todd, uh, was that we'll have a, a, a long-term facility report to the board at a work session? Would that be coming next month or?
Yeah, November, we, we'd like to have something to the board at the actual, the board meeting on the twenty-third of November. So the fifteenth is kind of our, actually the thirteenth would be that November date, that we'd like to have that complete. And then bring something to the board at the regular board meeting.
Alright, thank you very much.
Okay.
Kevin, can I just ask you the, um, and I know we spoke about it before and I don't know if it's on your, um, plan or not. The, uh, sidewalk entrance into the high school activities door.
Yes.
You, you know what I'm talking about? So not the main entrance, but the one that goes down past the pool to the gym entrance type thing?
Need of repair.
I'm sorry?
Need of repair.
The, the, the concrete is full of potholes and, you know, when we have visiting parents, fans, when we have our own fans, grandparents in there or whatever, that's the first thing they see. And they get out of their car and they walk in over this pothole, uh, sidewalk, per se.
Yes.
Um, number one, it needs repair visually, but number two, truly, if somebody trips and falls there, I don't know what type of.
We need to make some memories.
We're opening ourselves up to.
Some repairs for you at this fall before we go into winter.
I, is that on your list?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
That whole courtyard area, everything. Yep.
Yes, okay. Just asking. Thank you.
But thanks for the addition. If you have any suggestions, ideas, please email them to me because I'll make sure they get on the list. That's board. That's it.
Robotics really needs it.
It's on the projects list.
Did anybody catch it?
We're, we're running out of money. We're we're running out of money.
Let's skip to the wall. Thank you, thank you, Kevin.
Thanks.
Um no report from Special Services Committee uh this this month, uh this brings us to um other matters, starting with the approval of Resolution sixteen oh six. Uh leaving the southeast Minnesota Special Education Cooperative Joint Powers Agreement. So Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the agreement that we have been talking about a number of months ago with the the five districts that that did not end up being able to move forward.
That's correct.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution sixteen oh six.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? Uh this is a resolution, so Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Yes, uh Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jerry.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes seven zero.
Uh thank you very much, Mr. Clerk, uh and so that brings us to um item ten B, consider approval of Resolution sixteen oh seven, entering into joint powers agreement. Todd, you gonna tell us a little bit about this?
I will, and I might have uh Mr. Danner, because this is a pretty important vote, come forward for questions for these things, but this is the, similarly to the previous one that you just rescinded. Because the five districts did not work out, it made financial sense and also academic sense for the kids to have a co-op with Northfield. It's very similar to what we're doing right now, the only change would be is that we would have some of the students from the current correct building transported to Northfield so that they can lend their expertise on the SUN program. So they already have a place that's established, they already have uh the financial pieces established, and for the most part, it'll be a, I think it's a win-win for both school districts and a watch financial.
Any any questions for our, we have discussed this before, for those watching at home, I would have my.
I just have one, how far back in the archives did you had to go to find the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative? Back in the eighties.
That's the name that was proposed by Northfield, so.
Kathy and I know that name very well.
It does have a catch to it. And honestly, if that name's been taken already with the Minnesota Department of Education.
I was in that district at one time, but I don't think it was called the Cannon Valley, you might wanna check that out. But I was in that district, so.
Very long time ago.
Very long.
Very.
When Jerry had dark hair.
Did they measure time back then? We're bungling, man, I'm sorry, it's it's getting late, I'm sorry, it's been a long week, um any other serious questions for our? All right, thank you very much, uh with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution sixteen oh seven.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that's, sorry.
So uh this is a resolution, uh any further discussion? Uh Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jerry.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, I mean, Mr. Chair passes seven zero.
Thank you very much.
It's getting late.
It's getting late.
It's getting late.
Uh this brings us to item ten C, consider approval of memorandum of understanding for lead donation. Is this Nicole, do you, does Nicole wanna tell us about this, or are you, Todd?
I can summarize it, why don't you, if you want to bring Nicole up, go ahead and do that, but we do have, it's a it's a sick bank is what it is, and so we're, we have a staff person that we'd like to donate some some sick time to. And they've all been notified about the tax implications and things like that, so, but we need an MOU to um make sure we have all our bases covered with the contract, that's all it is.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing sign, motion carries. This brings us to item uh ten D, consider approval of Resolution sixteen oh eight, to name the Faribault Public Schools track.
Yeah, if I can um just offer a little bit of a brief summary, and certainly, Mr. Wolf, if you wanna chime in there too, the Faribault Booster Club had an idea of of naming the track uh after this person. Who has obviously done some pretty remarkable things during his lifetime, he still is alive. And um we brought this to the Facility Committee, and Facility Committee came up with a recommendation to honor this person by naming our track after him.
Well, I think that's a fantastic idea, it's what I would suggest, that's a a great way to keep in touch with our alums and how that is uh uh community pride, I think it's a great idea on behalf of the Booster Club.
Mr. Chair, and certainly to recognize this individual for what he did, but when this came up with the Facilities Committee, I did caution us about the gender um that we've dealt with. All of our facilities now are named after a male, I think we should be sensitive, I mentioned this to Ken too, so uh that'll be his task before he can officially resign. But I think we have to be very sensitive to that as well, and I I know that we've had a number of women out there who have been very successful, uh and we should be recognizing uh those women as well.
I think that's an excellent point, Ms. Olson.
Is Mr. Nelson gonna fly in or drive in for this dedication?
Yeah, uh you know, as of today, to my knowledge, Ted has zero idea that we're discussing this, um he lives out in California. And uh um I I'm guessing he has no knowledge of this, so I I believe, should the board decide to take action and approve this. Um Ken and I will make a phone call to him and um, you know, tell him what what's happened and ask for his blessing of it. Um we're not sure exactly the proper protocol, but we didn't, we certainly didn't want to alert him to something or or bring it up to him, and then for some reason, this board not decide to approve it. And we have a bit of egg on our face type of thing, so um he does come home, every, I I'll call it home, favorite home, um he does come back here maybe once or twice a year. Um I do know, and Mr. Hubert, I don't know if you wanna discuss anything or or share any shed any light on this, but um we're we're gonna discuss some signage at the front of the, you know, ticket booth, I'll I'll let you go ahead and.
Well, I I believe he comes back, because uh for instance, uh Minnesota State Mankato has the Ted Nelson Classic uh each year, a a track meet where they honor him. Uh which this coming year is, I I think February sixth, it's an indoor meet, um where they, I mean, it's just a big college meet. Um you know, the 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 in in changing or naming the track, the concerns that we have financially are things like uh the signage and 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 those kinds of things. Uh we've contacted uh one of our local companies to take a look at at what the cost would be, we have a track scoreboard to, you know, to put signage on top of that. We need to look at signage uh where you come into uh the the gate area for Bruce Smith Field slash Ted Nelson Track. Um so tho- those are some of the things that we need to address, um and the Booster Club has, you know, that that's that's one, this is one of the projects that the Booster Club would be interested in in potentially funding, so so that's a good thing. Beyond that, what else do we need to?
Yeah, I I mean, I think the dedication would hopefully be at a home track meet this spring.
I and I talked to Dave Weber about that, we, you know, Faribault honestly hosts more than the average number of track meets. Um we've got a great track, we've got track coaches who want to host track meets, and and we have people who are willing to work those meets. So uh we do a great job, I believe, in in hosting track meets. We talked about potentially doing this at the Big Nine Conference Meet, as we are hosting Big Nine Conference this year, but that's, you know, that 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 day is about the conference. Um and so we host three coed invitationals at the beginning of the season, and we are looking at doing it at either the second or the third of those uh coed invitationals that are in mid to late April. Hopefully, we would be able to get uh Mr. Nelson back to take part in, you know, in unveiling or or whatever it is that you'd wanna do with that.
I I will just add, um if you haven't read the newspaper article that pretty much sums up his career achievements, it is a worthwhile read. Um he is one of, to our knowledge, two world record holders um from, they graduate from Faribault High School. The other one is a gentleman by the name of Tom Lieb, and that was in the Discus or the Shot.
Yeah, Discus, I blew it back.
So um he's one of two that we're aware of, so.
First first Minnesota to break four minutes in the mile, so.
He told me that, I did check out with my good friend Google.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Um unless my memory is not serving me, I don't believe we have a motion and a second, so I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution sixteen oh eight.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion?
Blessings.
Uh hearing none, uh this is a resolution, so Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jerry.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Passes seven zero, Mr. Chair.
Uh thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Um this brings us to item ten E, consider approval of resolution for Minnesota State High School League Foundation application for grant for student participation. Uh I'm not exactly sure what that is, um I don't know, Todd, if you wanna take a stab at that, or if you can back up here, I don't know.
I'll let Ken explain, he's here, he's been here all day, so I'll let him go.
This is, this is the annual um Minne- uh Minnesota State High School League Foundation Grant that they have, uh again. And this may be the last year of it, or or pretty soon anyhow, um but but uh the State High School League takes, uh is allowed to take the tax money from ticket sales for sections and state. Move that into a foundation, and then uh there are two different grant opportunities from that foundation. This is the first one, uh and and this is basically just one that we need, we need you to pass a resolution, which allows us then to take the the dollars that come from this. And use it to help cover the costs of of some of our free and reduced kids who can't afford to participate otherwise. Um generally, we get about fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars uh from from the foundation for this, so.
I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? I think you can for that, um uh Mr. Clerk, this is a resolution, so I believe it needs a roll call.
Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jerry.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
All right, it's a lot tonight, huh?
It's pretty busy.
Turning your salary. Um item eleven, other items of information, uh student representative.
Hey, um we had a blood drive last week, and we got fifty-four pints of blood, so that was pretty cool. Um student council will be going to two different leadership conferences in the next couple of weeks, WE Day, it's up in the cities. And then SED, which is Southern Minnesota, just around the area, student councils, and just talk about um how to improve involvement in different events that everybody has. Um lots of seniors are applying for college this week, as NSCU has their free application week. So everybody's very thankful for Mary McMillan's in the Career Center, because she's very helpful. And soccer made it to state, so that's exciting, um they're gonna play against Hermantown at five thirty on Wednesday in Chicago, Chisago Lakes, so that'll be cool. Um winter sports are starting up, girls hockey started today, so, yeah. Um people are really enjoying the smoothies option that the food service, so it's provided, um I've had a bunch of them, they've all been really good. Um NHS is participating in the State Farm Safe Drive Pro- Driving Program, focusing on two hands on the wheel, two hands on the road. And they're gonna be hosting an assembly this Friday, so if they win this competition type of thing with State Farm, um we're gonna be earning a hundred thousand dollars that the kids can decide what to spend it on. And I think twenty thousand has to go back to safe driving area of where to get the money, um but, so that'll be really cool, we just entered a video and, yeah. Um and then the Theater Troop posted their annual haunted house in the black box as a fundraiser this past weekend.
Did you ever get that recording?
Yeah, I got it, yeah.
Good, good.
With your State Farm um video you sent in, is that anything that people vote on, or is that up to State Farm?
Yeah, well, the um the first Monday in November, it's like the second, or, yeah, I think it's the second. Then they're gonna lower the number, like they're gonna have finalists, and then we're gonna go out and have people take the pledge of they're gonna drive safe. And as many pledges as we can get, then we'll be, I think, the top four of fifty schools get it, so, yeah.
Did we do this last year?
No.
Oh, I thought I remembered this.
Oh, BA did it, so that might have, yeah.
Cause I remember seeing it all over social media.
So if there's something that we can help you with, please share.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Um and that brings us to items of information from school board members.
Chair.
Yes, please, Ms. Olson.
I was gonna mention this at the last board meeting, but I was elected to do that, uh I had an opportunity to be in Norway in August. And um part of a a program to take a look at their educational program and some of the issues that they're facing, and we'll continue to do a partnership with them. But uh just a point of information, their educational challenges are no different than ours in the United States. Um they are concerned about teacher education, they're concerned about dropout rates, um their number one issue in their schools are behavioral problems, uh which they need to deal with. They also have a very extensive multicultural uh issues that they're um facing with new immigrants coming from uh different parts of Europe. I had uh two guests here this past week, um visiting Concordia's teacher education program, and uh it's um interesting to see how the other parts of the world live. Which really is not much different um than the experience here in Minnesota, so it's a very worthwhile trip. We'll be making a number of other trips back there um in exchange for um some of the um activities that um will help us learn from them and they can learn from us.
Excellent, thank you, Chair. Any other items of information?
I will just mention, um if nobody has any plans, on Friday, November sixth, the Booster Club is hosting a burger basket at the KC's uh from five to seven, if you can make it, great, if not, no big deal.
Any other items? I have a quick one, uh we started the process of superintendent evaluation, um so surveys went out to, I think the number is about almost fifty staff.
Yes.
Um uh and they were supposed to be back today, as of this morning, it was about twenty-five, and so we'll we'll keep encouraging those. Uh but also, as of today, uh we had responses from five board members, uh and I'll let you do the math on that. So as a quick reminder, we would like that ASAP, because um I am. I will uh, I will be uh um talking to.
You count yourself in that, Jason.
I I I did mine, I was not gonna show up and not do mine. Um Tom and Jerry and I will uh um we'll look at those, we're we're the evaluation committee, so we'll start by looking at those and then make a summary of those and bring those to the board at a future meeting. Um and and I would like to do that uh very soon, so um please make sure in the next uh twenty-four, forty-eight hours that you, if you have not, that you do uh fill out that survey. And thank you to the to those of you who who have. Uh any other school board member items, please, Ms. Olson?
Yes, on November fourteenth, it's a Saturday, I'll be going up to Twin Cities and talk about the resolutions, it's called a pre-delegate assembly. We talk about that, change it, and then they bring the final stuff in December fifth, sixth, so. Now I'll keep you guys informed, probably in the December meeting of what passed and what didn't.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Olson, for for that service. An important way for our school boards is uh through this organization to uh to lobby for for improvements we believe are important, so thank you very much, Richard, for your service in that. So thank you very much for your, for your service in that. Any other items from school members? Mr. Superintendent?
I was able to attend a law seminar, the Ratwick, Rosack, and Maloney Seminar. Had a lot of good things. Talked about the, one of the hot topics is the Confederate flag and how do we decide whether or not somebody's violating the free speech or not. So it was very helpful and very insightful. Mr. Turtle and I both attended that. I attended the White Kane Day up at the academies. They asked me to read the proclamation, so that was pretty cool. So I was up there and that was very fun. I was at our M.A. SA Region One training with Commissioner Casillas. She was at the Rochester office and talked about, not so much the achievement gap with our minority students, but the achievement gap with some of our white students. And the achievement gap, you don't think of that part of it. But the state of Minnesota has seen kind of a plateau with the achievement gap. And we're, sometimes I think we're so focused on one end of the spectrum that we don't always focus on the other end of the spectrum. So I thought that was very insightful for her to talk about that. Let's see. I am, oh, we are also meeting with the county, the assistant county, to talk about truancy and trying to figure out different ways that we can work together to help with that. Also, social services, we've represented there. And we kept, we had some of our social workers and principals and counselors at that meeting as well. PDS meeting in Mankato. It's always great to work with those schools around the Mankato area. That's where Avidal started. And we have, we're always coming up with some new ideas through that association. And our work with our TOSs, the professionals that have helped with this ADSS grant has been terrific too. So it's a good relationship we have with about ten schools surrounding that area. Let's see, AD interviews start next Monday on the second. So we will probably, I've looked at the list now. I've got a lot. We have to thin down. Nicole's been doing a great job helping out with that whole process. So I think we've got a really good interview process in place and looking forward to talking to some of the folks that have applied. We've had about forty people apply and some very, very good candidates. We'll have a couple of students on the interview team too, so that'll be interesting as well. And I'm also part of the MDE principal, I keep on saying yes to these things. I'm also on the MDE principal evaluation team. That's going to, because a lot of schools are struggling to find an appropriate principal evaluation tool. And I think we have a pretty good one. So we are, I am meeting with others that are talking about kind of a, a template for other school districts. Not ours, but with a lot of other feedback that MDE can come up with to help with that evaluation system. So, and it's also good for me to hear what other schools are doing, so. It's been busy. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Todd. That then brings us to item 12, dates to remember. November 4th, at 3:30 PM, Wellness Committee meeting at the district office. November 9th, 5:30 PM, work session at the district office. And also likely a special session at the district office. November 2nd, perhaps, a 5:30 PM work, special session at the district office. November 10th, at 4:30 PM, the policy meeting in the district office. November 11th, at 3:45, the insurance committee meeting in the district office. November 16th, at 7:30 AM, the finance meeting in the district office. November 16th, at 3:30 PM, the curriculum committee meeting at the district office. November 17th, at 4:00 PM, the community ed advisory committee at the district office. And finally, on November 23rd, our regularly scheduled board meeting right back here at City Hall Council Chambers. With that, we will adjourn for a few minutes in order to open back up in a few minutes into closed session.
I need a motion.
You need a motion to close the, okay, so I'll entertain a motion to close our meeting.
Well, for the closed session.
Adjourn to close to, to
To move to
Adjourn and to close session. Somebody give me some wording on this once.
Move to a closed session.
We'll move to a closed session. I'll entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.